All right, good evening and welcome. We're going to call this evening for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for November 26, 2018 to order. Roll call please. Mr. Alexander?
Present.
This is Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo?
Here.
This is Lasher.
Here.
This is Mansfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Reverend Walker?
Present.
Thank you. Joining us tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance is Kayla Munn from Boris Community Learning Center. Kayla is a fifth grader who has attended Boris CLC since kindergarten. Her time at Boris has come full circle as she has had the same teacher, Mr. Mills, for both kindergarten and fifth grade. Kayla brings an enthusiasm and light with her everywhere she goes. She was always ready to share a friendly smile and helping hand to students and teachers alike. She is an excellent student consistently earning top marks and participating in the gifted program in math. She is a dedicated Cleveland Indians fan and she also enjoys playing baseball as the only girl in the whole league. Good job. Kayla also plays basketball and loves to attend Sunday School. When she grows up, Kayla plans to have a career in sports medicine. Very nice. Kayla, will you join us?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for our wishes stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My principal is Douglas, my mom and dad, my aunt, and my grandmother.
All right, thank you for that. Community and school reflections, would anyone like to start?
I just want to say, I'm going to say a couple of things. We went to the annual conference, the high school board conference, and I just want to give a shout out to our Case students. Woo! They were, what's that area called? The exhibit?
Student achievement.
Well, the student achievement, but they were just phenomenal. The project that they displayed when people were walking around and you get to walk around in this exhibit hall and visit different stations and we had the opportunity to visit our Case Elementary School and the students were wonderful and they were telling us what they were doing for the homeless people. They were actually making mats out of plastic bags and it was just phenomenal. You know, the insulation from the plastic bags, they explained how all of this works and how it's going to help them whenever they're cold nights and how the plastic would heat them up, you know, and actually pad them to some degree. I kept trying to fill on there to see how, you know, how thick it was to see if I could sleep on there. But it was just wonderful to see our students well represented there with such a great initiative helping the homeless and that was just awesome. That was just a thrill to me. One of the other workshops that I attended was the implicit bias workshop, which is always before us now. It's such a prevalent topic and the gentleman that was actually the speaker for the workshop, he was a little white Italian guy and he was like, "I know you guys think this is, you know, a little bit off color because a little white guy is telling you guys about implicit bias." But he was so good and he was just such a thrill to listen to about the things that we all as human beings face and need to look at a little closer about ourselves and our biases and not let those deter us from doing the things that we know we need to do to, you know, be a great community. So it was really a good workshop. There's a lot more that went into that, but I'm just going to share that much and let some others share.
We also had two of our administrators who were there as well, Ms. McVay and Mrs. Bailey, who were also present, who were there present for that as well, so that was good. Since I started, I'm going to go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead and finish it out.
I always love when I go to conferences like this and you kind of learn more and more of what's going on, but there were a couple, and I'm not going to take a long time. I always, every time I go, this bridge is out of poverty. It puts me in the shoes of a teacher and what do the teachers have to do, what do they need to do? And it makes me wonder how well are we preparing them to deal with kids who have situations or come out of situations like that. So it always gets me and I think about it and I want to make sure that our staff, our administration, make sure that our teachers get training so they can understand what it means to deal with kids who have some issues to come to school because every kid is different and all these issues are different. So that's something that's always, I mean, the other part is the trauma in the classrooms, also preparing our teachers to deal with kids who have had trauma. There are so many kids now that have so much trauma that's going on because there's so much that's going on in this world that connects them with some type of trauma, whether it's a friend, whether it's someone who's close to them, a family member, whatever it may be, and those are things that we have to be able to understand that our staff needs to be prepared to understand what's going on with them and understand some of the characteristics that come with some of those type of issues. And I also went to the implicit bias, which Mrs. Baylor already talked about, and I want to also talk about, there was something on safety. Okay, Sycamore Hill School District outside of Cincinnati did a very, very good presentation on safety in schools and it was, I was presiding over that, the moderator, and one of the comments that I gave to them, they needed more time because there was so much that was involved and they were just really getting involved as to what was going on. And I'm reaching out to those individuals because they have a very good plan. They include, as police officers, they have administrators, and they do a lot of training. The training goes from administration all the way down to custodian, bus drivers, everyone, so they can understand what goes on there. So that was really interesting. There's more, oh, there's one other thing that I wanted to say, I'm just going to mention it. There was a mid-sized urban district collaboration and Dr. Eugene Sanders, who's Sandusky Superintendent, Myrna Coley, who was the superintendent for East Cleveland, Dr. Jolly from Warrensville, and Dr. Keener from Maple Heights, but they talked about these things that are going on. But one of the things that really caught, I think, everybody's attention in the room is we get these grades on these report cards and then if you get a certain grade and then your grade goes down, for example, if you get a D and your grade goes down to an F, you're kind of in this tizzy of you've got to get these schools up and you have three years. The thing was, you already went to two years and most school districts thought that you would, once you get that grade, you have an opportunity to start, you've got three years to correct this. No. If you had one grade here and you got a lower grade and then that's two years of that time to be able to turn it around. So I don't think a lot of school districts understood that because there were school districts that were in there. There was an Ohio legislator who was there and he pulled up on his phone all the school districts in the state of Ohio and a couple of our partners here right around us who were in that situation had no idea that they were in that situation. So I want to encourage us to stay ahead of the game, make sure that we look at those things here in our school district because I don't want us to slip into something like that and we don't really need to because it hurts us, it hurts the kids, most of all it hurts the district and we don't need that. So I'm done. That's all I have. Sorry. For more than I wanted to give, but...
I have a few things I want to point out also. In addition to Case, Litchfield was one of the other schools that was there and I was in a conference session a little bit after, we'd all been to visit the students, and Rick Lewis, who's the head of the Ohio School Boards Association, came and found us to tell us that we had some of the absolute best presenters. It wasn't like he ran into me and said, "Oh yeah, I saw your kiddos." He sought us out to say, you know, everybody else was kind of going through the motions, but those Case and Litchfield kids, they pulled us right in and their teachers were right there and how engaging they were. So that was really impressive to not just hear how impressed we were, but that others in the state were noticing. I'm going to only say one more thing about the conference on my part and that would be Akron needs to show up and show off because a lot of the things I went to, and I've talked to Dr. McWilliams Woods about this, there were so many things that I went in thinking, "I'm going to learn a lot here," and I'd sit down and I'd start listening, I'm like, "We're doing that so much better. Oh my gosh, we're doing that so much better." And these were people who, they were showing their best and they were really huge improvements, but we are already doing so many of the things. When we go to CUEB, we get really challenged. At this point, there are so many things with this conference that we are doing so much better. So I want us to show it off. So that's going to be my encouragement for the next year and that's going to be my push is when I see something, I'm going to try to say something and say, "Can you please put this forward for OSBA?" Because I think we just need to show off a little more. We need to strut like some of the other districts do and I'm not naming any names, but there are a couple other urban districts that really strut their stuff and they really are not doing anything better than Akron. All right, enough said. Thank you. I kept it without naming names because I wanted to so bad. I want to talk about what I did right before I went down. I got my oil changed and my tires rotated at the new East Bridgestone Service Center right before I went to Columbus and they knew that I was about to hit the road, so they were a little extra nervous. Their teacher put an extra, you know, we don't want anything to happen to this board member anytime, but especially while she's driving to Columbus. They had four cars up while I was there. All four cars were being worked on with great enthusiasm. Their teacher couldn't say enough great things about how engaged the students are and watching them, I took lots of pictures. If you haven't seen them on my Facebook page, they're there. So I wanted to give a shout out about that. On my way back from Columbus, I got to stop and see, and we're going to do a recognition here in just a few minutes, but I wanted to give an extra shout out to the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America from Kenmore Garfield because I stopped there to watch and congratulate them at the Harvest Dinner for Project Rise. Great way to finish off a really exhausting day. And right before Thanksgiving, I got to go to the IB Showcase to see the extended essays and watch the encouragement given by the seniors to the underclassmen who are considering being IB students going forward and that was really fantastic. So shout out to them for always doing a great job. I did also get to see Mr. Williamson and Ms. Porter present at OSBA, so I forgot and went back to that, but that's it.
I just want to highlight one of the things that we're doing here trying to show off, the district, is our portrait of a graduate and we'll say a little bit more about that. But I wanted to show the trail. When we're talking about that on the local level, they were talking about mental health on the level with the OSBA and there were two presenters, a mother and a daughter, and they shared their experiences with dealing with mental health and how it's so different in different counties and what is available to assist our students who are having difficulty. And not only our students, but what's available to help our parents so that they can be able to determine if there's something really going on with their child and what resources they can tap into to help them. Mental illness is something that affects every one of us and them. You know, we have a family member, we may have someone in our community that has some difficulties and how do we address that and how do we address it when we have a child? How does a teacher deal with that? So they're able to properly guide them through the educational process. So we're trying to do that here, one segment of our portrait of a graduate, so that we can learn and help not only students, but parents learn how to deal with children who are in crisis. And so that was a very rewarding session, but a troubling one because of the resources that are not available. How much money we spend on so many other things and we don't put money in an area that's crucial to our students' health and wellbeing. The other is when we looked at the spotlight for our children and thank you, both Case and Litchfield were involved and they were very much engaged in their activities, their IB program and very much engaged. But I personally want to thank them. At their tables, there was a photo, myself, and I got today that photo with some of the signatures of the Case and Litchfield students and I personally want to thank them for going the extra mile, things that they didn't have to do to make my day even special, more special. Wanted to share with the board members the plaque that was given at the Ohio School Board Association for the all Ohio school board member and so I want to thank you because nothing's done in a vacuum. All of you helped me to achieve this and I want to thank the superintendent, treasurer, staff, all of you for assisting to make that possible and thank you so very much.
It was such an honor to be there.
Hope we didn't embarrass you. Could we do a little vow?
No. The lights were so bright, I was so happy that I heard over to my left, Frau just laughing. So that's, I appreciate that.
I want to just add one more thing, maybe a couple things. North High School, Channel 5 did an article on North High School, it says, the headline was "One Akron School Trying to Better Prepare Kids for Life After High School." And they were talking about our career academies and what we're doing at Akron Public School and how great it is, so I want to give a shout out to North High School for that. And I believe Bookto got some other press with the Westside Leader. I apologize that I didn't, it was about bullying. So to Bookto, to North, to Case, to Litchfield, my apologies. I'm sorry I didn't get to see Litchfield, but we're just so blessed to have such a wonderful community, educational community, Akron Public School representation all the way around. Everyone, teachers, administrators, board members, students, especially parents, we just have a great community and we're not perfect, but we are getting better every day. So just wanted to say that.
I'll add just a couple things briefly about the conference that we all went to. John Houston, who's the lieutenant governor-elect, actually came to the conference. I got this, this was kind of a surprise visit. Came out right before Gina Davis. At the time, I was like, "Come on, Gina Davis is, it's her, I'm so excited for her." But I was actually really impressed by some of the things he was talking about. He really wants his and Duane's administration and their legacy to be about helping kids and I don't think he said that just because he was in a room full of us. And he also talked about actually funding some things, like funding mental health services. So it'll be exciting to see in the next couple of years what actually happens, some of those campaign promises, but I thought it was really interesting that they showed up, that he came and he talked about what the next governorship could actually look like. And the session on mental health, just to reiterate that, it was incredibly powerful and that the program was called Ending the Silence where there was a mother and a daughter who actually talked about their real lived experiences. The program's not actually in Summit County yet, but it sounds like there might be plans to have it soon or at least be able to utilize resources and people in other counties to help share those really, really powerful stories. The last thing I'll say quickly is I went to a database session that was looking at research in 2015 about how taxpayers look at, Ohio taxpayers look at, how schools perform. And they had this big checklist of how taxpayers indicate if they think a school is doing well or not. And there were things like college class opportunities, success at college, good job placement, opportunities for all students to succeed, and it was so neat to see us kind of ticking off a lot of those boxes, like that is the thing that the people in this room that they're thinking about every day. And it was really neat to see that there's data to support that we're doing these things and there are data that taxpayers really care about and that our community members really care about. So kudos to everyone in terms of what the strategic plan and visioning looks like. And I said that was last, really last now. Just thank you to Mr. James for speaking on the panel at the Unlikely Film Premiere. That was where many of us went after the conference. The film was really powerful, I thought. They kind of followed five students through their college pathways and showed you how difficult it actually can be to find a college, to graduate from college, and the support services that don't exist in some communities and that do exist in some communities like in Akron. And then afterwards, there was a panel of educators talking about kind of the future. So thank you, Mr. James, for being here.
Thank you. In the interest of time, I'm just going to mention a few things as well.
I'll be brief. I did not get to attend Capitol Conference this year. First one I missed since I've been on the board, so hope I don't have my own personal summer slide here. I did get to do something interesting. One thing about Capitol Conference as well, I know we, some of, I'm not sure who all went to the Engagement Center in Columbus City Schools, but I'm looking forward to have that conversation and learn more about that as well. One thing I did have an opportunity to do in the last couple of weeks was go to Akron Roundtable and they had an interesting speaker named Jude Kearney, who grew up, one of 19 children, grew up in poverty in Arkansas, and he ended up at Western Reserve Academy and from Western Reserve went to Harvard, went to Stanford. But it's interesting, all that educational opportunity and the crooked path he went through to get where he's at. He didn't know what he's going to do, so you don't have to have a pedigree education to find yourself wanting and looking for what your passion is like and we talk about that a lot with the College and Career Academies on how, you know, most people at this table probably took a stupid path to where they're at and never knew they were going to be here at this point in time. So that was interesting. And then one quote that he made, and this is to paraphrase, but I wrote it down quickly as he was talking, but it was very interesting. He started talking about processes and how important processes are, but he forewarned that people are more important than processes when it comes to, you know, group mentality. So I felt that was an interesting quote from our roundtable speaker for November.
Just want to highlight just one other thing. OSBA Black Caucus met, they had a different setup this time, it was a breakfast, but the emphasis was that the Leo Lucas Scholarship is still available. It's available for any one of our students. The information is now online, so a student, a counselor can help a student get online, process that because again, we want our students to take advantage of that. We had a student, I guess, a couple of years ago to get their award, but we didn't have them this last go-round and I noticed there were two students from one area. So we need to make sure we encourage our students to apply and to receive, I believe it's $500 scholarship, the Leo Lucas Scholarship. So we encourage our counselors, our students, those young people who are seniors and looking for some money to apply for that scholarship.
He said one of them.
He wants to know your name.
Leo Lucas Scholarship. It's given by the Black Caucus, Ohio School Board Association, Black Caucus.
Mr. President, I'm going to collect it to say one thing too. If I don't say this, this word from Bookto will kill me because I promised when I would say, talk about this. But Bookto had their Bookto Harvest Festival and that was last week and they had about 300 people who attended. They had so many different individuals there, different families. They talked about College and Career Academies, they talked about the pathways, different pathways that Bookto so parents and community got a chance to understand that. There were various organizations that had their tables there in the gymnasium and then they ended with their gospel choir having a performance there, so ended with a nice bang there. So I had to give them a shout out because I went to that and I promised that I would say something about it, so thank you.
Thank you. I also enjoyed attending the conference and I get what Lisa is saying and we talked about this at the conference, and I won't name their names either, because when we do go to CUEB or NSBA, you feel a lot more challenged because you're with districts of like size, very urban districts, very large districts. When we go to OSBA, out of the more than 600 districts that are in Ohio, you know, there are typically eight plus urban districts that face, you know, the kinds of challenges that we face. And it is always interesting that we tend to be at the top of those urban districts, one or, you know, first or second spot in the urban districts, but maybe we're not out there telling people what we're doing quite as much. And I think Lisa was even in a session when she mentioned one of the things that we're doing and the entire room gets quiet because they all want to hear about what we're doing. And we get a lot stopped by a lot of people, "Oh, you're from Akron, you guys are doing this, we are doing that." And it is kind of surprising to hear, but I agree with you, I'd love to see us more out there sort of strutting our stuff. We have a lot to strut about. On the flip side of the mental health piece, I attended another trauma-informed teaching session that I thought was really interesting, though I was texting a few people because I was pretty sure I had seen it. It might have been the same presentation that I had seen last year, the School Readiness Summit, because it looked very familiar, some of the graphics looked very familiar, but it was another good session on working with kids that are facing trauma. Threw in some finance, Lisa and I did some early childhood education and three bargaining unit focused sort of sessions that were all standing room only with probably 100-plus people in each of those that I found really interesting. Came back to that and went straight to the Unlikely Film Premiere as well, which was really interesting documentary that included, as has been already said, folks from Akron and a spotlight on Akron and the University of Akron and getting prepared to go to school and what happens when you try to go to school and what kind of barriers you face and how we break those down as a community. So it was really good. But of course, the highlight, as has been mentioned already, was getting to take my picture with Tina Davis.
I thought you were going to talk about Reverend Walker.
I was.
Me too?
No, the real highlight of the conference was, but I did get a good photo.
You did.
She was fantastic too and she echoed something that we hear, I know, from Dr. McWilliams Woods all the time and hers was, "If she can be it, she can see it." And when I got a chance to say something to her afterwards, I said, "You know, it's a little nuanced thing, but we always couch it in sort of the negative, you know, they can't be it if they can't see it." And I did like how she just puts the positive spin on that, but really focusing on women and girls and media, but how that sort of spills over into every, I did not know that on average in every Disney film in the group in any crowd scene, there's only 17% women. That was really fascinating. Anyway, so that was really interesting. But the highlight, the true highlight, was all of us being in, we, I mean, I raced, I was there like 15 or 20 minutes early to reserve seats. We were throwing coats across chairs to make sure that we could be front row to see Reverend Walker. And for context, what we were talking about earlier is to see Reverend Walker awarded as an all Ohio school board member for this year for all of the work and the 20 years of dedication to kids in Akron. So congratulations for that, you did a really great job. You deserve a round of applause. We did also tour the Customer Engagement Center at Columbus and so just want to send a shout out and a big thank you to all of the staff at their Engagement Center. A little context for that, as we look at consolidating two of our buildings that are both over 100 years old and to the new administration building at 10 North Main, one of the things that we really want to focus on for all of the people that do business with Akron Public Schools is how we engage folks when they walk in the door, from the minute they walk in the door to the minute they walk out the door and we hope in a satisfied way, but how we engage them. And Columbus has a great jump on how they really sort of consolidate things into one building, how you're met at the front and greeted and sort of sent off to where you need to go, how they put certain services together. So to Tim's point, really looking forward to that discussion and what that shapes up to look like over at 10 North Main. So thank you to the superintendent and treasurer and assistant superintendent for putting that together. We had a great tour and really got to see a lot, so I really enjoyed that. The last two things that I'll mention are just that I, Reverend Walker, and we mentioned- The last two things that I'll mention are just that I, Reverend Walker, and we mentioned this earlier, will be getting together to pick some dates, really for two things. One is to, we had this discussion in Columbus, but just to make sure that we get a date on the calendar, that we can do some organizational planning prior to the beginning of the year, and also look at getting date, a date on our calendar for our 2019 Board Retreat. So, look for some information and some dates being thrown your way for that. That's it. Communications and recognitions, if there's nothing else. We're going to start with the recognition of our Academic All-City Fall Sports with Mr. Vassilanti.
Good evening, everyone. We appreciate the time again to honor some of our student athletes. And I'll begin by calling them up. If you're an Academic All-City Student Athlete, come on up and kind of form a single file here, if you would, next to me. You're going to get a chance to speak soon. I know you're anxious about that. Don't be shy. I see Firestone here. Come on up. Now, eventually, each of the student athletes will tell us his or her name, school, grade, and support from the fall season. This might be the most... While they're collecting their thoughts, I want to acknowledge our Fall Sports Champions Honors Guild. Some of those teams are represented by their coaches tonight, as a matter of fact. Girls tennis, that was Firestone. Coach Sampson's in the back there. Thanks for coming, Coach. Our volleyball champion this year was Firestone as well. Boys soccer, Miss Firestone, Coach Householder's in the back. Our girls soccer champion was Alec. Lady Orangeman had their best season ever. Outstanding effort by them this year from Coach Tucker and his, or Coach Tucker. He had two daughters on the team. He was the boys' coach. Coach McNewcomb in girls. From cross-country, we had boys and girls champions from Firestone, Coach Carroll's here in the back. And I think I'm just missing football. Our football regular season champion was Bookto. And I know Mrs. Powers is here. Club Director of Bookto and First Lady of Bookto Football as well. And Bookto also qualified for the state playoffs, Division Four, I think the first time since 2010. Is that correct? So, awesome job by the Griffs there. Also, East Football under Coach Hayes made the playoffs for the second time in three years in Division Three and advanced to the Sweet 16. They won their first-round game and then advanced to the second round, so great job by East Football. Now, for the main event, we're going to do some stuff strutting here. So, to qualify for Academic All-City, each of these student athletes had to earn at least a 3.4 GPA during the fall and be a varsity letter winner. We're going to hear from each of them soon. We totaled up today, we had 198 Academic All-City Honories from the fall season, which is roughly 55% of our letter winners who are also in Academic All-City. So, that's pretty awesome. Great job across the board. So, we'll start here. To my immediate left, again, name, grade, school, and sport.
My name is Shawanda Combs. I am a senior at North High School, and I played volleyball this year.
My name is Maria White. I'm a junior at Firestone, and I also play volleyball.
My name is Josie Capper. I'm a junior at STEM High School, and I play volleyball at Firestone.
My name is Jacobi Polk. I'm a senior at Firestone High School, and I play volleyball at Firestone.
My name is Arianna Putnam, and I'm a senior, and I play volleyball at Firestone High School.
My name is Robert Pumayo, and I'm a freshman at Firestone, and I'm here at Cross Country Hall.
My name is Alexis Mackia. I am a junior at Firestone, and I play tennis.
My name's Connor Fortfeger. I'm a junior at Firestone, and I play soccer.
My name is Charlie Bailey. I'm a junior at Firestone, and I play soccer.
My name is Isaac Kohler. I am a junior at Firestone, and I play soccer.
My name is Anthony Gorsuch. I'm a junior at Firestone, and I run cross.
My name is Chase Powers. I'm a senior at Bookto, and I play football.
My name is Olivia Phillips. I'm a junior at Firestone, and I play tennis.
I'm Asha Mink. I'm a junior at Firestone, and I play tennis.
And I'm Ian Curly. I play soccer at Firestone High School.
You did a great job. Many of these student athletes too exceeded the 3.4 by far. Am I in the way?
You do. We need everybody that way, so everybody can see everybody, especially the camera.
Come on over.
They don't take pictures around corners yet. Much better. Thank you. Keep going.
Thank you.
You look great there, by the way.
I was just saying, many of these student athletes exceeded 3.4 by far, some of them well in the four-point range. And as you heard, some of them, you know, attend either STEM or Akron Public College and so forth, so earn a lot of college credits. And it's not easy being a student athlete, of course, or being involved in any extracurricular after your regular school day, and some of them manage to hold down jobs too and probably maintain some semblance of a social life, I would imagine, so. They're busy people, but high achievers, we're really proud of them. Thanks, everyone. Unless anyone else has any more to say? Any speeches? No? All right, now go to your homework. Thanks again for the time.
Next on our agenda for recognitions, we'd like to recognize the Firestone CLC Marching Band for their outstanding accomplishments this fall as well. The marching band qualified for the Ohio Music Education Association, or OMEA, State Marching Band Finals in November based on their performance at the district contest where they were named grand champion. This marks the 17th consecutive year that the Firestone Marching Band has qualified to perform in the OMEA State Finals. In addition to their outstanding marks on the OMEA State Finals, the band was recently selected to perform in Chicago's Magnificent Mile Lights and Festival Parade, which was featured on Cleveland's Fox 8 News. The Firestone CLC Marching Band has a long tradition of outstanding accomplishments, including performances at Severance Hall and featured performances at the Ohio Music Educators Professionals Conference. The band is under the incredible leadership of Dr. Kate Ferguson, who is with us tonight, and is also joined by drum majors Cole Johnson and Hannah Keer. Cole, who also plays in the jazz band as a senior in the Akron School for the Arts at Firestone and a four-year member in the marching band. Hannah is a sophomore in the Akron School for the Arts. This marks her second year as a member of the marching band, and she's also a member of the Firestone Women's Chorus. Dr. Ferguson is well-respected among band directors throughout the state. She's represented the Akron Public Schools at the OMEA Professionals, or sorry, the Ohio Music Educators Professional Conference, Bands of America, and the Midwest Band Conference, and she's considered an authority in the instrumental pedagogy and music literacy. Dr. Ferguson truly embodies all of the qualities of a teacher leader. In light of these accomplishments, we'd like to recognize Dr. Ferguson and the students of the Firestone CLC Marching Band. Thank you for continuing to shine a bright light on the arts and Akron Public Schools throughout the state and beyond. Do you guys like to say anything about your time in the band or what you enjoy most or what you've gotten out of it?
We just came back from Chicago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Chicago.
Sorry, it's a toll.
I was in town, they made me play the French horn, and I did not want to play the French horn.
Sounds like our French horn.
And are you doing, are you going to offer again the opportunity this year, or did we pass it already?
You missed it.
For the board members?
You missed it, we'll do it next year. But they will, we did just get back from Chicago last, not quite a week ago, and they will televise the Chicago Parade on Christmas Day at noon. They will be here.
Congratulations. Thank you for representing us so well. And last, but certainly at least, we have a proclamation in recognition of Kenmore Garfield High School students and staff, and also a certificate of appreciation for Cheryl Maras, teacher at Kenmore Garfield High School. So, I'm going to read this, actually, Ms. Mansfield, since you brought this forward.
I actually, I actually read it at the event. I read a little bit of it, but I'll go ahead, sure. On Tuesday, whereas, on Tuesday, November 13th, the annual Project Rise Harvest Dinner was hosted by Kenmore Garfield High School for the family served by Project Rise. And whereas, the Kenmore Garfield staff and teachers donated money to purchase the turkeys for the harvest dinner. And whereas, under the guidance of teacher Cheryl Maras, the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, the FCCLA, which I didn't know what that meant by the way at the time, students prepared much of the food, set up for the event, served the guests, cleaned, served the guests, cleaned up afterwards, and also helped with social activities during the event. And whereas, the Kenmore Garfield students and staff provided this community service out of the love of all of Akron students and families. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Akron City School District that Section 1 Board Members hereby recognize Kenmore Garfield students and staff for this outstanding community service and extend their sincerest appreciation and congratulations to them for a job well done. And Section 2, that a copy of this proclamation be made part of the permanent record of the Akron Board of Education and a copy be presented to Kenmore Garfield High School.
And the certificate that we have is a certificate of appreciation to Cheryl Maras, teacher at Kenmore Garfield High School, for continued devotion to serving our district's Project Rise families by coordinating the annual harvest dinner and teaching her Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America students the reward of service to others.
I have with me a date. I have Michelle Pitts. She is from Umarab, which is a group that works with Akron students. And she comes to my classroom, and she is her, she's amazing with them. And on this day, when it was busy, it was a Tuesday that she usually comes to our classes, and she was right there with me, and we were making food all day, and she was amazing. I also brought with me my husband and son. Every year, they rush there right after school and work, and they're with me right, right along the whole night, serving and cleaning and taking care of all the, everything else. So, I regret that my students can't come, there's transportation difficulties and so on. It's a shame that they're not here to, to see.
That's why I wanted to make sure that I was there that night.
Yeah, thank you for coming. It was amazing.
Absolutely, because I wanted to have them know. Appreciate it.
And they did, they did appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you.
They sent a lot of people. It was a lot of work.
Well, thank you for what you do. And for the proclamation, we do need to approve that as a board, so I'm looking for a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the proclamation for Kenmore Garfield. Any comments, questions, discussions, final thoughts? Hearing none, roll call please. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Thank you so much, and thank you again for what you do. All right, moving forward, approval of meeting minutes for the regular meeting, November 5th, 2018. So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second on the meeting minutes. Do we have any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 35 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval. We have a motion and a second on the personnel recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 9 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval. So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second on the business affairs recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please. Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
No report this evening.
I gave my report, Treasurer's report. No reports. Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy.
Sure. We are presenting for the second of three readings prior to approval, the following revised policies. Revised Bylaw 0141.2, Conflict of Interest. This just adds more details about conflict of interest for us as board members. Revised Policy 1541, Termination and Resignation. This just basically says no license, no job for our administrators. Revised Policy 3160, Physical Examination, and Revised Policy 4160, Physical Examination. This just removes the mandatory tuberculosis test requirements. Revised Policy 8141, Mandatory Reporting of Misconduct by Licensed Employees. There's a small paragraph that's added here that talks about folks that hold dual licenses, like school nurses, for instance, we would report any misconduct to both of those licensing agencies. And then presented for the third and final reading, and this one, we are requesting your approval tonight, it is a new bylaw... like school nurses, for instance, we would report any misconduct to both of those licensing And then presented for the third and final rating, and this one we are requesting your approval tonight, it is a new bylaw, 0141.1, Student Representatives of the Board of Education. This is very similar to what you saw earlier, except for one item that we struck out in our last policy committee meeting, and that was removing that the student would publicly represent the interests of the board. And I think our conversation was about keeping with the protocol that we all operate with already, that our president speaks for the board, that we wouldn't want to put that on the shoulders of a student in that situation. So at this time, we would request your approval for that new bylaw.
So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second on new bylaw 0141.1, Student Representatives of the Board of Education. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
I'm real excited about this one, so.
Well, that's what I was going to say after seeing presentations at past OSBAs and National School Board Association, student involvement. It's exciting.
Thank you. All right. Roll call please. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Score one for the good guy. All right, Finance and Capital Management? Instructional Policy and Student Machine?
Just a reminder that there are a few things at your seats that Mrs. Baylor's showing off over there.
Right. You guys can read it at your leisure.
And please look at the pictures. Pictures are worth a thousand words when it comes to instructional policy.
So we, you know, I was going to ask if they have ad hoc committee reports, but I would like to applaud Mrs. Mansfield and Ginger and Morgan and everyone for the work they put in, because the new bylaw we just passed tonight is the result of that ad hoc committee. So I don't know that there's necessarily a need to disband it yet. We might want to be hasty, but...
That's why they're sitting here, right?
Right. But congratulations, that's really awesome. Very exciting. Portrait of a Graduate?
We had a good meeting last Friday, and I think we are narrowing down some maybe draft proposals that we might be able to present to this body to at least begin the process of how to look at the discipline and other behaviors of our students. The emphasis is, from what I understand at the end of the meeting, they would like to continue to move forward with some more ideas, but we'll be bringing those forward to each of us so that we can at least let the public know we have looked at some drafting, some possibilities, so that we can present that, but then continue to fine-tune some of the other activities that we have.
I would just add that I did have a brief discussion. Jeremy Lyo was here in the audience. His daughter was an academic scholar for athletics, and we are going to... Our next step at this point in time is to gather our steering committee, and we want to make sure we have administration in attendance as well to help us... help steer the steering committee in the right direction here to make sure we're not doing stupid things in. So we'll continue to move forward on the conversation.
Thank you both for all the hard work on that one. Lots going on. Okay. Any unfinished business? Any new business? In pursuit to Ohio Revised Section 121.22, G1 and G3, for the purposes of discussing the employment dismissal discipline of a public employee official of the school district, and G3, to consult with legal counsel to discuss disputes involving the board and or the school district that is subject to pending or imminent court action, I would ask for a motion to recess into executive session. We have a motion and a second to recess into executive session. Any final thoughts, comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, roll call please. Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.